Good evening. I'd like to call to order the town council meeting for May 16th, 2023. We are in the Harvey hearing room. We are also on Zoom. The phone number for Zoom is 646-558-8656. The ID number is 810-5594-5688, and the passcode is 895-726. Denise, roll call, please.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Visolo. Council Munson.
Here.
Council Belcher.
Here.
Council DiMarco.
Here.
Council Flahcut.
Here.
Council Aiello.
Yep.
Vice President Ruggiero. President Luteri.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ask everyone to please rise for a pledge led by Council Flahcut.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the May 18th meeting has been circulated. Everyone's had an opportunity to check them out. Any questions, discussions, or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it.
Abstain.
One abstention. General information recommendations. We are fortunate tonight to have a friend to the council, Mike Vatalaro, along with Sarah Denalak?
Danachak.
Danachak from Massport, here to give us an update on the runway project. The floor is yours. Mike.
Thank you to the council president, the council and Madam Clerk for getting us on the agenda. We're here just to talk about a brief runway closure. Runway 15 right, 33 left, safety rehabilitation project. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah and let her speak to the slides.
It's easy for you, Mike, because you're not too engineering on it. So if we want to move to the next slide, so this year is our, this is our airfield project for 2023. It is a runway safety rehabilitation project, which is mandated by the FAA. So if we want to flip to the next page. Oh goodness, I'm not good with this. Sit that down, I think. Okay, so 15 right, 33 left is Logan's longest runway. It is what you see in blue on the screen. It is primarily used by the FAA during northwest winds, which are typically prevalent winter-spring months because aircraft do take off and land into the wind. And it is our preferred late-night over Boston Harbor runway for noise abatement purposes. The runway was last rehabilitated in the summer of 2012, and it is now at the FAA thresholds for replacement. Typically, we do our runways every 10 to 12 years at Logan based on their condition. The project will be partially funded with the FAA, which is Federal Aviation Administration Airport Improvement Funds and some infrastructure funding, and it has been part of the FAA's five-year airport capital improvement plan for Logan with the target date of 2023. So we typically, the FAA sequences their airfield rehab projects based on pavement conditions. And in 2020, they funded the rehab of 927, which some of you may be familiar with. It runs across the screen. And we were able to accelerate that project by three months due to COVID to take advantage of the lower flight volumes. So this project does require Massport to close 15 right, 33 left, starting in late August. Our scope is to enhance the safety by replacing the pavement and by improving runway and taxiway intersections, particularly in the middle of the airfield. We also will be upgrading the electrical infrastructure and converting all the runway lights to energy-efficient LED. Right now, we're in the enabling process. We're starting some of the construction, getting the erosion controls out. And on August 14th, we will be closing the runway for approximately 100 days. We came up with that date based on meeting with the airlines. We've been meeting with all our airlines and stakeholders, including the FAA, since last September, and also trying to be mindful of the Sumner Tunnel closure. We were trying to shift it later in the summer, but also take advantage of the typical wind patterns. So we've been actively coordinating with our stakeholders, and we have an outreach plan for our communities and our passengers, which Mike will talk about in a moment. I'm going to turn it over to Steve Silfrizio to talk about the runway closure and shifts.
Yeah, so we have an additional three configurations we can use to spread the air traffic out with the closure of 15 right, 33 left. We're going to see, obviously, a temporary change in the use patterns based off that closure, for as Sarah said, about the three-month time period. I think there may be some intermittent closures after that that will also affect that pattern. But 15 right through 3 left, the big thing with that runway is it's our overnight preferred runway to use because it utilizes overwater procedures. So we keep, you know, keep the aircraft away from land masses and disturbing people in the overnight periods, mainly between 12:00 AM and 5:00 AM. So that's going to be the toughest part. So the bottom line, Winthrop, they will see some additional operations for 927 departures off 9 and arrivals to 27. So there will be some impacts there, as well as some people that are affected with 22 left arrivals. We're anticipating increases in operations on those particular runways.
So we do have some comprehensive mitigation measures that will be in place to reduce construction noise and other impacts. We're looking to muffle or otherwise lessen noise from the truck backup alarms within OSHA guidelines and other regulations. Maximize daytime work to the extent possible, particularly the noise-producing activities. We have hallways airside that will maximize the distance from the neighboring homes, particularly at night, whether or not we're using the cell side of the airfield or coming in closer to the terminals and avoiding the northern vehicle perimeter road. Our goal is to haul waste and other materials as much as we possibly can during the day. And we also prohibit trucks from using the city of Boston streets to and from the airport. That includes Bennington Street, everything around there. All the construction, all the construction traffic has to recirculate through the airport by 90, 93, and 1A and the Coughlin bypass road. And we also look to aim all lighting for our night operations away from the communities in the air traffic control tower. And just to go back to the trucking issue, we are also not looking to introduce any other trucks during the Sumner Tunnel closure. I know we have some work going. We are certainly not going to push trucks out into the gridlock, if there is any.
Yeah, just another point. We've met with the state elected officials, so they've been briefed on the project. Massport is holding a Zoom webinar on June 13th for the community. They can call in, ask all the questions they need to ask. We've met with the Massport CAC, and I think there's a few others lined up. So feel free, if you guys have any questions he's asked, and hopefully that was informative.
Council, have any questions? Does the council have any questions? Council Munson?
You mentioned a couple of the runways quickly that will be taking on some of the increased traffic during that 100 days of reconstruction. Which runways were there? I don't know the runways by heart, so when you say a number, it kind of goes over my head. So.
Could we go back to the map?
Yeah, so I can probably comment on that. So Winthrop is primarily affected by three runways, mostly departures off of runway nine, which basically fly over Point Shirley. And then arrivals to 27, which is the reverse of that runway, which is basically, again, Point Shirley area that would get those arrivals off of 27. And then near the Bell Mile Marsh area, those are primarily affected. Court Road over there is affected by 22 left arrivals.
22 left arrivals.
Yeah. And that gets heavily used in the summer anyways, so that might be a less noticeable increase. But the 927, you will see some increases there as well, just because the goal here is to spread those operations that are normally taken off on that runway and landing on that runway, to spread those out as evenly as possible. One thing going for us in the August months, typically winds die down a little bit, so we might have a little more flexibility at spreading that air traffic out a little bit more. So like I said, that's the goal, is to spread it out as evenly as possible.
Is there any kind of, you said the hours of 12 to 5, midnight to 5:00 AM is when you basically try to keep the noise to a minimum?
Right.
Is that the general, like, is there a kind of safe number of like an hour when the, like, the flights start to really die down? I was actually looking at flight schedules last night because there was no, like, reprieve from the constant kind of taking off and warming up. So is there a 8:00 PM, 9:00 PM, or is that midnight is basically when you can expect things to really quite down?
Yeah, they really don't start dying down till about 11:00 to midnight. We have some internationals that go over, you know, overnight at times, but it really dies down. Midnight is a good point where I really see a dramatic reduction in the number of operations.
You're having a longer presentation. So should I join on the phone and?
Are you all set, Council?
Yeah, I lost my train of thought.
That's okay. We can go back if you want. How many, just for everybody's sake, six run, how many runways taken in?
Six.
Six? And how many flights a day on average?
We're averaging right now about 1,000. That's arrivals and departures. That's been our average.
But the majority are on the runway that you're going to be working on predominantly?
It depend on the wind direction if the majority would be on that runway or not. So again, usually we go through, you know, maybe a few configurations a day. So typically, unless we have a really consistent weather pattern, then we might be on the same runway for the same day. But normally, we have like, you know, one or two configuration changes during the day.
So on average, if it's even, if it's 18% each runway or something, and 1,000 flights, is it going to be about 180 flights diverted into other runways?
I think it honestly depends on the weather.
But it could depend on wind.
Because once it gets hot, we're usually on the twos. This runway isn't used as much. I think it really depends on the weather and what the aircraft capabilities are. So it may not be as many on this runway. I mean, we're trying to shift it, but I will say our summers tend to be trending a little bit later in the season, too. So we're seeing that pattern where we're on the twos, the 22s and 27s more during normal hours.
And a lot of the overnight, are those more cargo or more passenger?
Internationals and cargo, yeah.
Is there a potential, I mean, obviously, the international flights, you're not going to really adjust that much, but is there a possibility for cargo to come in more during the day and not have as much of an effect overnight?
I mean, their schedules are pretty set. You know, everyone has been briefed, the airlines have been briefed on the closure of this runway. So they may alter plans because it is one of our longest runways, so some, you know, aircraft would prefer that runway, especially heavier cargo planes because they need additional runway length to, you know, to get up safely. So I'm not sure if the airlines, you know, those cargo carriers may have adjusted based off of, you know, our conversations with them about the closure.
And you feel pretty comfortable with the 100 days?
Yes, because I plan to eat Thanksgiving dinner with my sister and have it be the awkward holiday. But no, 100 days does build in weather and it accounts for everything. So 100 days, and when we originally planned this project, we assumed the tunnel was closed all summer. So our planning was based on a lot more traffic May through September. But I'm fairly confident with 100 days because our contractor's also trying to beat that.
And is this a seven-day work week?
I would say for the most part, yes. And I will say they may do some six-day work weeks because there is benefit to rest in the middle because once you're out there for 100 days, you kind of lose track of where you are. So there may be a few rain days or some sun days where they work, they don't work, but we are assuming 24/7.
And is there disruption in the other runways at some, there's intersection points, right?
Right.
How do you deal with that? And will that cause more effects?
We are looking to do some of the work on 4 left a little bit ahead of time, which is the one probably closest to the terminals. There is some work in the intersection. We'll be looking at the forecast to see where it's the least impactful. And then when we tackle 4 right, which is our other 10,000-foot runway, those are 12-hour closures because our international traffic cannot take some of the other runways. So we're trying to work, these will be probably September, October timeframe as the schedules tail off anyway. So we're looking to do those September, October timeframe. And once we get dates, we can certainly relay them to you.
Council Aiello.
Well, thanks for coming. I appreciate it. I just find it stunningly vague. You must have data from last year and then from the years before COVID hit about the utilization of this runway for those months. So you must know volumes, we should know those volumes, of the volumes that you then have to dissipate by time of day and expected by average wind conditions during that part of the year as you go through the 100 days, what runways get what kind of additional traffic. And there's a big difference between takeoffs and landings, and we should be able to see that. And that should be discussed with the community so we could advise people about the increase in noise activity coming from planes. I am disappointed if we don't see that, given that we're only five months away. I know the FAA has tons of data, Massport has tons of data. I am just very surprised we're not being given that data. That's point number one. Point number two, we'd like to understand the contractual relationship you're going to have with the contractor. I think the council president, so the first one was sort of what come off of John Munson, but the council president asked a question about, are they going to finish the job on time? Are there going to be liquidated damages for the contractors failure to perform? Are there going to be liquidated damages for the contractor violating the restrictions on the work? What does that contract look like? That should be shared with our in-house council to make sure we're being protected over a contractor. You know, contractors go out of business sometimes mid-job, and you end up with having to go to bonding authorities, et cetera, and these things get dragged on. It would be helpful to share the kind of risk that is going to be out there for the contractor to be able to finish the job within that 100 days, and whether or not there are acceleration bonuses to minimize the number of days. Could we go from 100 to down to 90? Is there a reward for the contractor? Are those kinds of mechanisms being utilized? So, and I have a, I'm not going to hold the rest of the council up, but a whole bunch more questions sort of like that. It'd be helpful to get a real written document with all of the data and all of the tools and acknowledgement of all of the risks and all of the impacts that are going to be happening from noise and air pollution, from light shining, from nighttime work when little kids are trying to go to sleep versus daytime work. So I think we, as a council, should request a detailed written report from Massport about this project. I understand it's needed. I travel all the time, so we all like to have safe airfields. But as a member of the community, I'm just surprised by the vagueness here.
Any other questions from the council?
Cranky again.
Well, we thank you, and I consider Winthrop and Massport to be very good friends. And like every relationship, we don't always agree on everything, but we incredibly appreciate the time that you give us. And you're there when we ask for you to be here, and we appreciate that. And I'm sure, we do ask for updates as the progress goes, and if any timelines change, you know, as some of the tunnel seems to change week to week, and it's very discouraging at times not to have the information. So, you know, to be transparent with us is very much appreciated. But again, thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thanks, Rob.
Hey, anytime, Vatalaro.
All right, public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first one is the taking of town easements for the Revere Street TIPS project. And I will ask Jim Sipbala to come up, if he would, and town manager.
Yeah, leave it hanging.
We will open the public hearing. We will ask for an update, an explanation from the town manager and town council.
Do I have an image on that?
Thank you, Mr. Council President. As many people know, we've been working on this Revere Street TIP project for a while. One of the requirements of Mass DOT is that we take a look at all of the potential easements, temporary easements along Revere Street and, you know, some of the side streets. What these are is, you know, a lot of them are sidewalks that have been in place for a long period of time, and people may not have known that they own a small portion of it. So Mass, I'm sorry, Mass DOT requires us to dot all the i's and cross all the t's, and they want to have all these easements in place so that way down, once the project starts, that somebody doesn't come forward and, you know, file something and try to stop the project. This started back a few months ago when we sent out initial letters letting people know about the easements, the takings, the eminent domain takings. And we sent out a reviewer, an appraiser, to take a look at the easements, both the temporary ones that are needed for construction, and then the permanent easements that are required for, you know, sidewalk adjustments and things like that, and some roadway adjustments. What, once those, all of those easement reports were done for approximately 67 parcels or so, the, then sent out, the appraiser hired somebody else to review his work. So that goes out to a review appraiser. So there's two sets of reports. There's the initial appraisal report and then a review appraiser report. Out of that review appraiser report is a two-page document called the Just Compensation Study. And that Just Compensation Study gets mailed out with a cover letter, letting everybody know what the process is, that, you know, the town of Winthrop is taking this property. Here was what the appraiser came up with for a value of both, not only the temporary, but the permanent easements, and, you know, what the next steps will be. The next step here is that you will, the council votes the order of taking. Then there's a, you know, a certification of the vote, documents that I sent out earlier, and then also the, the motion that goes along with that as well. So part of those, thank you. Included in that was also a breakdown of the properties and the individual compensations for all of the parcels with the owners' names. The total of all of it was $719,800. That will be paid out of the ARPA funds. Good use of the funds. We don't have to come up with the money, and then we'll be able to move forward with the project. So that's where we stand tonight. I've been answering phone calls for the last several months from many property owners, probably upwards of 30. We're required to keep a diary from Mass DOT of all of our interactions and phone calls, and we submit that into the project, along with a lot of other, you know, necessary documentation. Our in-house attorney, Jim Sipbala, has been working diligently on the order of taking, back and forth with Mass DOT. So we've got everything in order in accordance with the requirements that they set forth. So we also include brought the mile-hour plans. If anybody wanted to take a look at them, these are the actual plans that'll get recorded, the registry of deeds, along with the order of taking. Some people have inquired, you know, maybe they have a question on the value, how that came up, and is it adequate enough? What I've told them, and what is the process, is, you know, you can, they, this gets voted by the eminent domain, so the council votes this. It gets recorded. They come in and they pick up their checks, say it's whatever, $10,000, you know, for the temporary easements. If they feel like that's worth more than what the process is, is they basically have to challenge it, you know, go out, have their own appraisal done, challenge the appraisers' work, and try to prove that maybe that $10,000 is worth $20,000. Not many people have asked that, but certain people have. And that's the process. I mean, this happens no matter what, and then you can fight about the value later if you choose to. So, and that's the recourse, you know, for anybody that's not happy with the value that was assigned by the appraisers. So that's where we stand today, and certainly myself and Attorney Sipbala are here to answer any questions, but thank you for your time.
And again, the public hearing is on the easement part of this project.
Correct.
Not on the whole project. And I believe, maybe even before the town manager was here, the council voted for the town manager to have the ability to use the ARPA funds for this.
Correct.
Particular project. But the council will be voting on the easement.
Easement, yeah, that's required. If this was a different form of government, say it was a town meeting form of government, this would be a town meeting.
Special meeting.
Voting it. But in this form of government, it's the town council.
I'm going to open it up to the citizens, first in-house citizens here, and then we'll go to Zoom if there are any questions regarding the easements as part of the TIP project. And I'll go to Zoom if there are any questions on Zoom regarding the easement portion of the TIPS project. Yes, we have a gentleman here. Just please rise and name in precinct, please.
My name is, good afternoon, everybody. My name is Avnati Bolwet, and I own a property on 139 Revere Street, corner of Locust. And.
Do we reside in the town?
I live right there.
Right, 139 Locust. Yeah, just so you name in precinct. So, yes, thank you.
I live on 139 Revere Street, apartment two. I own the whole house.
Yep.
My daughter lives downstairs.
Thank you.
She's also on the deed. And I bought this house in 2010. And we did a lot of work, and we liked it. We really loved the way we have it now, even though it's a lot of work to keep that little landscape that corner. So I got all the paperwork at the general, just the council. I didn't know even nothing about this meeting. So I, I want to know if we can get our own appraiser, if it's going to be, what's, when do we find out if this eminent domain, what is that? How does it work? Because if we're not happy with the amount.
Right. Well, I think, I think the town manager's just explained it, but I'll let him explain it again now that you do obviously have that option.
Yeah, I see the property here. It was assigned a value. If you don't agree with the value, your option is, is to essentially.
I have a private appraiser.
You get a private appraiser, and then you come after the town and try to prove it. You know, but remember, two appraisers looked at this. Not only the first appraiser, but then the review appraiser that looked at it as well.
I had one on my list.
No, no, no.
The last one. The one appraisal I saw, I have.
No, I get that. There was two. There was a review appraisal. If you don't have it, I can drop it off to you.
Well, that was probably the first one. The last one that I got, I don't know, when was the.
No, the appraiser sends his work out to be reviewed. So they don't come out to the site, they take a look at the work, check the comparables, take a look at all the work he did, and just make sure it was done in accordance with the standards for that industry.
Yeah. Because I have one appraisal, just I was asking if you said two. I didn't have the other one.
No, I just want to let you know, two sets of appraisers looked at it. There are two appraisals, though. I'll make sure you get the other one, whichever one you got.
Yeah, I don't know which one is the first or the last.
Yep, that's fine. But if you don't agree with it, what it is, is this is going to get passed, you know, if the council votes this, this will get passed, and then the easement is recorded. Now, you're not happy with the value, so you come and pick up your check for whatever it is. You take the check and you say, okay, I'm not happy with this. Then you file paperwork or have an attorney do it.
Yeah.
And you come after the town, and then you decide if you want to try to push and get a higher value.
Yeah.
And then that'll be worked out over the years. But it won't stop, it won't stop this project, but you do every course to challenge the, you know, value that was set.
Okay. And so when do you think this stuff is going to start? I mean, six months?
No, a year, basically. This is all.
Spring of 2024.
Yeah, about a year from now.
I also saw something else. We found it online. There's bus stops, that they want to put this and that.
They're going to be moving some bus stops, yeah. It's all been talked about in multiple council meetings, yeah.
I have one extra bus stop right in front of my house. So.
Okay.
That's kind of a, an extra thing that I have to, because it's already a mess in the morning over there when there's the schools. At 8:00 AM, at 2:00 PM, they're parking, there are cars, there are buses. That's all. We need another bus stop.
I get it.
And so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, for voicing your opinion. Any questions on Zoom? Any questions on the council, from the council? Council Flahcut?
Along with this gentleman, are there others that we think may come back at?
No, I had a meeting with somebody else that had some concerns, but those were alleviated today, so I don't anticipate any issues with that. I think the council sent an email from the owners of Marketplace. They had a couple of questions, but I met with them this afternoon. I don't anticipate anything there, so no. Everyone else has been, understood the process, was happy with the value, just had a few questions about, you know, when it was going to, you know, similar, when it was going to start, and, you know, how it might impact their business, things like that. So, and, you know, Steve Calor, our DPW director, has been out onsite to meet with a few people that had concerns about the plans and, you know, when work starts, and, you know, could we put a small retaining wall, you know, those kind of questions, so.
About how much land are we taking from these?
It's not even taking. It's just, it's an easement for like, like, I'll use the marketplace as an example. So they've got a sidewalk that runs up to their brick building.
Right.
All right. Well, they own six inches all along the building, so it equals about 180 square feet. So we're paying them something that's been there for, you know, probably 50 or 100 years that they didn't know they owned, but it's just a six-inch sliver from the road right away to their property line. So they're giving us an easement. So they still own the property. They're just giving us an easement to keep the sidewalk there that was always there.
And we're not going to do anything to that sidewalk?
No, I mean, whatever work we do to fix the sidewalk, that's it. It's going back in the same.
And that's pretty much true through the rest of it?
A lot of them, yeah. There's very few actual, like, altering the property. Most of it's just, I would say probably not almost 90% of it's just paying for sidewalks that people didn't know they owned, or, you know, sections of property that people didn't know they owned.
Council Aiello.
So if we can stick on the marketplace, because I saw the letter that he had sent, one of the issues seemed to be around the spaces that are directly in front of the store that were going to be used for storage of construction materials.
It wasn't storage of construction materials. It's just if they had to, like, put a piece of equipment there for a few hours, but, you know, it was, I didn't, because, you know, for open meeting law, we responded to all those answers. We gave answers. I'll send them after this meeting. But the CHA and then Director Cal have responded. There'll be no issues there. Obviously, the goal is to keep the marketplace.
So all those issues have been.
Have been worked out, yeah. We had a good hour-long meeting today, and we talked through everything.
Okay, great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council of Munson.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. I just wanted to, A, take a quick look at those if I, if we, if you don't mind.
You didn't have Milky Way on your fingers or anything?
I have not eaten any Milky Way, Tony. It's not my fault. It's not my fault.
Exactly. Yeah, Jim was up there earlier saying we can't get any chocolate on these plans or anything.
No chocolate on the, on the mileage.
Yeah. Well, you can put them on the, yeah, if you want.
A couple of quick questions I had for you were, one, were the appraisers third-party, or where were they chosen from? How were they chosen?
CHA put it out, and they decided, I think CHA put it out to.
CHA gave us some recommendations.
Right, yeah, a list of recommendations.
Three of them. Two of them responded back. One of them was unavailable.
Yeah.
So it was out for public bids?
Correct.
So anyone could have opted to do it. So there was no, like, bias or any in-house appraiser or?
No, 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 nothing like that. I didn't know the appraiser.
I can come to you. It's okay. It's not the end of the, I just wanted to see the minutia that you were talking about, so the actual physical land that were, that these easements are given. And I just, it was, one of the complaints that the Wallace family made, I think, was not just about the use of some of the land, but also just the form of communication. I was wondering if there was any way we could just stay abreast of the changes or give the citizens that are along the streets like this an ongoing the citizens that are along the streets like this, an ongoing update, not once in a while, but an ongoing, even when nothing's happened, just to say, just to make, to ease people's nerves, because this is going to be a long and arduous process for a lot of people, including some of the people that have actually had stuff shaken off their walls, and like, so there's a lot of, I'm actually a framer, so I'm getting a lot of that damaged frame coming off the walls, and so it's real, the, the actual, the impact is real. So, A, a form of communication that is consistent, you know, your town manager's blog is actually fantastic, one thing I was thinking was, wouldn't it be great if Larissa could just check in with Steve and some of the other construction heads and say, hey, what's going on this week, what's going on, and do it in a, like, a monthly or bi-weekly fashion, so that people could just go ahead and always know about when things are happening, and be alerted to anything new about to happen?
And absolutely, and based off the last meeting, you know, with these concerns were raised at that point, Director Cala and I sat down, and we went over, you know, similar to what happened during the CBD project, where we had the two-week foot look-up, we're gonna institute that, not only on the work we're doing, but with this project, so, and we'll have links in the town manager blog and on the website, so, yeah.
Great.
Message received.
Come on. And it is similar to the CBD project, where that was, you know, that was a three-year-long project, basically, that affected every season, and 95% of the work was done during the day, but there were always two-week look-back, look-aheads, basically, to give us an idea of what streets were being affected, the closures that were gonna be affected, and that kind of disruption won't even be in most of this, but...
Keep in mind, too, I mean, to acknowledge this, I know Director Cala said it, we had to increase some of the pricing, like, the first phase of the project that they were working on, that the town's doing with regard to, you know, water mains and sewer, you know, we're doing a lot of that at night, so we don't disrupt the business owners, and, you know, so we made that accommodation, and, you know, made sure we communicated that, but I'm sorry, I know...
And I would like to say, too, because I'm sure there's a lot of business in the center that will say, well, why didn't you do the work at night there? But one of the things is more the traffic patterns, too, with the schools, we don't want to have disruptions with school service getting into Gorman Court Bangs, which is a big reason why this, a lot of this work's being done during the day. I'll get to Consul Ayala in a minute, Consul Belcher had her hand.
Thank you, how many permanent easements are there, total?
We have that total?
It's on the order of taking.
Okay, sorry. It's on the document that we sent out. Only three of them? And then sidewalk easements, too, sorry. Yeah, there's three permanent easements in their order of taking that was emailed out to you, labeled E1, E2, and E3, and then they can be found on the plan, and then on the...
The one full taking is...
It has 35 sidewalk easements.
What's...
Thirty-five sidewalks.
Thirty-five sidewalk easements.
So 95% of them are...
The full permit?
No, temporary, 90. The full permits are three?
Three permanent easements, right.
Three permanent.
And one full, he said.
One?
No, 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 they're labeled, permanent easements are the E1, E2, E3, and then the sidewalk easements, which is what I talked about earlier with the Marketplace, is 30, whatever, 35 of those, yeah.
Oh, I thought Steve just said one permanent.
Steve, it's not one permanent easement, what are you, the sidewalk easements are permanent.
No, I said one full taking.
One full, yeah, right, yeah.
And what's for that full taking?
What's...
That was the house that was already under the Kennedy, that was the, that was the Kennedy Drive.
Okay.
So, what, that, that full taking, how much are you taking?
It's a small little...
It's a small, tiny piece, yeah, yeah, very small piece, yeah.
Consul Ayala, did you have follow-up?
Yeah, and again, just to repeat something I've said in the past, I think, you know, the notion of putting your blog and updating it weekly, bi-weekly is great, but you may be surprised to find out that not everybody in this town thinks of it as like the New York Times or anything, so...
No, and we also talked about the Winter Transcript about putting out updates there as well.
You need a transcript, we may need signage elsewhere, I mean, this is literally the central lottery of the, of the, of the town, right?
Well, we'll have the temporary work signs that'll be go up when the work's going on, for sure.
Yeah, but communicate, 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 we should, like I just asked Massport, we should have a formal communications plan, written communications plan, that is obligating ourselves, our engineer, our contractor, to communicate, both to people living directly in the pathway of the work, as well as everybody else in the town, as well as, you know, the MBTA and MWRA and everybody else, because it is gonna be highly disruptive, and we just need to make sure...
Also gonna hold a couple of meetings in the evening, and then also on Saturday morning over at the senior center, with the plans, and let people know the schedule.
And signage and detours, and having adequate police officers all along the detours to reroute people, so people don't drive like they're crazed, out of their mind, like they did in the Highlands, at a larger scale.
Right.
So a formal plan is my request, that we'll be prepared.
I would make the argument that transcript is better than the New York Times.
Seeing that, I'm gonna close this public hearing, I thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you.
We'll open the second public hearing, National Grid, Plan Number 305, 307, 59231. And this involves Cottage Ave. Do we have...
Thank you.
Representing from National Grid.
Hi, I'm Dan Roach, I'm here on the phone.
Again, Roach, okay.
Yeah, my name's Dan Roach, I'm representing National Grid tonight, and I'm petitioning on half of the property owner at 59 Cottage Ave in Winthrop. What we're planning, what the homeowner's planning to do is to change from an overhead service to an underground service, so the homeowner would be working with their electrician and contractor to basically trench on their property and into the public way directly to the pole, so it's, it's about a six-inch trench, I haven't seen the sketch yet, but I assume there'll be two conduits, one three-inch for our service, and another two-inch that's usually used for utilities. So there would be a cut of the sidewalk from the property line to the pole itself, approximately six inches in width, and that's where the conduit will be laid, and then there'll be a sweep to bring it up, and this is all done by the contractor via the homeowner, and then they'll run the conduit, the conductors through that conduit up to the pole. National Grid will then do the connection when it's safe to do so, and, and obviously there's a municipal inspection that has to happen before we connect anything, and then we'll make sure that all the proper guarding, if not in place, will be in place when we leave. So it's a fairly standard ser, you know, arrangement when any customer moves from an overhead service to an underground. And just for those that may not know, the reason for it is aesthetics, and in my opinion, it's a little more reliable, it's in the ground, it's not subject to wind and other type of damage, tree branches, et cetera.
Thank you, the time of this project?
Um, I don't have the time precisely now, but I would presume that it would happen within the next six to eight weeks. They, they've known about the project, the homeowner, for quite a while now, so they've lined up, I spoke to their electrician and met with him, and he was to arrange the trenching. Most of that, again, is on the property owner's side. They're eager to get the service moved, they're actually moving the box itself, and they're moving that down further onto the property on the side of the house, so, and I know they're moving fairly quickly on the rehab of the building, so I would say within eight weeks.
I guess maybe you misunderstood, I meant, in terms of, in terms of time, I guess the length of the project, the time it would take to complete the task.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it's relatively quick, I would say within a week, you should be able to trench, there is a little bit of cement work on the public way around the conduit, there isn't, that's not a requirement on the homeowner's property, but once the trench is done, it moves very quick, and then, you know, the grid itself, we can do it within four hours in any day, we have line trucks that run around that do this all day, so once we know the date, we can wrap our end up in four hours.
And would it involve any road closures for any length of time?
Uh, no, there's usually, like I said, a line truck that will pull up, they'll use the appropriate safety beacons, you know, cones, the beacons on the trucks, et cetera, standard kind of, you know, traffic mitigation, and then, but there's always a path for vehicles to get by, and like I said, it's, it's four hours, but that, that's my, you know, my wide window guess, most could do it in probably an hour and a half.
My last question is just the coordination, to make sure that the truck is available when the homeowner needed it, that's not a problem?
Not a problem at all, we have a project owner that tracks all these work requests, so I'm on the design side, and they're constantly thumbing everyone to make sure that the handoffs happen and that the trucks are out there. The line trucks run for every town, we at least have one truck every day, so we'll work with the homeowner, because in this case, they are using the existing service during the rehab of the property, so they want a very quick outage, so that they'll basically, we'll come, we'll do a disconnect, they'll quickly connect the new service, and then we will, at that point, connect it to the, to the pole with the new service.
Any others have all been notified?
Uh, yes, that's part of this process.
Okay, I'm going to open up for the public first, yes, DPW Director.
How you doing, Steve Cala, Department of Public Works? Just a couple of questions, so you're petitioning for a private contractor, if they're the ones that are gonna be trenching across the sidewalk?
That's correct, the, the line of demarcation is where we connect at the pole, so the customer owns trenching, the conduit, the sweep, the curved piece that will interface it right with the pole, and then the first eight feet of metal conduit, the customer pays for all of that, we really, and will do all that work, we will just do the connection, and obviously make sure that it's safe.
Okay, so, I have, haven't yet seen a permanent application for the, for the public way from anybody, so, they'll need to provide a $5,000 street sidewalk bond, so I don't know if you've been in contact with the contractor or just the homeowner, but E1 needs to come in and pull a, a sidewalk construction excavation permit, and needs to provide a bond in order for that permit to be granted.
Okay.
And we don't just do partial replacement on panels, again, I know you're not doing the trenching, they may saw cut a six-inch trench, but they will have to remove and replace the whole panel.
Okay, I will make sure this gets to the homeowner, as well as the contractor, the electrical contractor.
Will there also be a ground rod put in the sidewalk, or will that be all done internal?
Yeah, there's a, there is a ground that's right next to the pole, so depending on the condition, we'll either reuse what's there, or we'll, we'll drive a new one. I, I did want to say, too, is that we are changing the guide wire that goes from the pole, today, if you saw it, it basically comes down from three-quarters of length of the pole, from up, up the pole, and comes with a pretty broad sweep into the driveway area of the existing home, I guess it was fairly overgrown, and the previous owner didn't use that half of the driveway, so they want to reuse that, so in, in our plans is a, what we call sidewalk guy, so the, the wire would come straight across over the sidewalk, so that it's handicapped, accessible, it's wide enough, it covers the whole sidewalk, and then it will come down at a sharper angle, so that it'll go still onto the homeowner's property, but the idea here is to, you know, have the point of contact with the ground, you know, away from the drive area and away from the proposed walkway that they want to put in.
That guide wire will be completely on private property?
Um, well, it's attached to the pole, so it goes over the sidewalk.
Right, but it anchors it on private property, or it anchors on the town sidewalk?
No, it anchors in private property, still.
Okay. Anyone else from the public? Seeing none, Consul Flockhart.
Thank you, Consul President. How does this affect the pole, and is the pole a double pole right now?
No, the pole's a single pole, it, it's going to stay as is, the only thing that really changes is, is the way the wire comes off the pole, so it doesn't penetrate as far into the homeowner's property. There's several of these sidewalk guys on that street already, I don't know if anyone's from that area, but basically they, they come straight off the pole, over the sidewalk, a height of, I think, 11 feet, and then they come, you know, down into the homeowner's property, so instead of you can division the pole with a triangle, it comes across and then straight down, so it's a little, you know, less onerous for the homeowner, does, they won't have this big pole going through their proposed walkway, or, excuse me, wire go through this property, walkway, it'll still go onto their property, though.
And doesn't it affect any trees?
No trees at all, no? There's no trees there, there was some brush that was in the driveway, but that's all been removed and taken out as part of the rehab process, so when I first got on site, there, it's wide open right now, the front of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Consul?
Can I ask one? Sure. Just, just one last question again, DPW Director, the conduit that gets put in the sidewalk, whose responsibility is that after the job is done? If that fails, is that National Grid that comes back, or is that on the, on the private homeowner?
It, it's, it's funny, it's a sticky, actually, the homeowner technically owns it all, but what we find is, you know, when there's a problem, obviously the grid has the wherewithal to, to address these things, so we'll come in and work with them, there might be a shared cost, depending on what the issue was, or many times the grid will just cover it. We're not gonna argue when there's a problem of that nature, you know, that usually means the conductor's potentially at risk, and the goal is really safety at that point.
Consul Belcher?
Thank you, this may be more of a question that has to do with permitting through Director Cala's office, but this is a tight street, so I don't know if we'd have to block off parking across from where the truck would be during that part of it?
A police detail will be required for, for any, any road closures, so if they can't leave a lane of traffic, they'll have to...
And I don't know with the parking, because parking is across the street from where the work will be done, so...
Yeah, I will definitely take that back to the operations team, and we'll either have a police detail, or we'll file and make sure that we have, you know, notified the town and have the sign, the signage, et cetera, if we're gonna take up, you know, if cars can't get by. I didn't think it would be a problem, but we'll, we'll make sure it isn't.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the council? Seeing none, I thank you very much for your time, Dan, and I will close this public hearing.
All right, thank you very much, thanks, everyone.
Public comment?
Yes. Vicili Malios, Precinct 5, I'm gonna first start off by apologizing, because I cannot believe I have to waste my time to talk about chickens with the town council, and I have apologized to every department that I've had to speak to about these chickens, because it should not be a priority for any board in this town to have to worry about this. I'd like to know if the, if the member or chair of the Board of Health has the authority to issue citations? I believe they do not. They do not? I believe they do not. So why is it okay for the chairman of the Board of Health, Bill Schmidt, to issue a citation on May 4th, 2023, for violation of keeping of chickens without a permit?
I think this is something that's being looked at internally.
Fantastic.
Yeah. I'd like to, sorry, one second, just ask the town manager to...
Yes, I, I actually, we received your complaint, and I spoke to Mr. Schmidt about it, it was a little bit of confusion with regard to, they have their own internal policies, which talks about the, you know, board members going out and enforcing, unfortunately, the state laws, Mass General Law, 111F, and many others in Section 111, I don't allow that, so what it is, is the board as a whole needs to vote, and then if they want to instruct the health agent or whoever agent works for them to write the ticket, that that's the process moving forward, so that's been explained, I think it's clear now, obviously that ticket won't be enforced, it will be discarded, so just so you know.
Fantastic. I just would also like to just bring up that I did receive a letter following this violation, and I just wanted to kind of make it also where that, and I'll read it aloud, please be advised you are in violation of Keeping of Animals Regulations and Close Your Photos as well, as well as a $50 violation. Please keep in mind that the violation amount does increase if the violation keeps occurring. Any questions, please contact Board of Health, Bill Schmidt. I just want you to be aware that this letter came in, and if I didn't say something, I was definitely expecting another citation from the chairman of the Board of Health, Bill Schmidt. I did file a formal complaint with the town against Mr. Schmidt, I feel that, actually, I don't feel, I know that I am personally being targeted for this situation, because uh, for this situation, uh, because I am defending my uh, my opinion. The sense of community around this is lacking. When this came on my my doorstep, Mr. Schmidt was invited over as a guest to a family barbecue. Following that, it then became Mr. Schmidt, the Chairman of the Board of Health. I've sent many uh, two emails to the Town Council. I have provided facts, resources, expert advice, uh, veterinarian advice to the Board of Health and pretty much my opinion has been ignored. Two hundred and eighty-five people, more signatures than each one of you needed to get on to the ballot. I had two hundred and eighty-five signatures opposing one line item. And it was regarding location, two hundred and eighty-five. And when I brought that up to the the Chair of the Board of Health, his message was very clear to me. Those signatures meant nothing. What kind of message is this appointed official giving to our community? If it's starting with me and my chickens, what's next? We have stores that we're trying to promote here. They're trying to come up in front, trying to trying to bring business to the town. That's what we always say, want to bring business to the town. We want to make it lively. We want a sense of community. But for me to spend the last year fighting this, it's disappointing and unacceptable. Does the Town Council have the ability to remove an appointed official?
If the appointed official is appointed from the Town Council, they do on, you know, given cause. Very good.
I suggest you do look into my complaint because it's not just me. I know that there are others out there that I haven't spoken up, haven't sent in written complaints. I have filed an information request for every complaint made against uh, every complaint and grievance made against the Chairman of the Board of Health. I'm waiting for the town to uh, give me any of that information. Uh, and and I'm I'm telling people now, people at home watching, who you elect matters, who you appoint matters. Okay, I shouldn't be here tonight. I shouldn't have wasted a a year's worth fighting this nonsense. It's petty nonsense. I've had to go to social media about it. I I I've thought about going to the media about it. I don't want to have to do that to our town. And unfortunately, there's one, one person and two board members that are causing. I thank you for your time. I apologize for for having to speak up, but you know what? If I don't do it, it will continue to happen to the next person, to the next business that has to close their doors and move out. To the next resident that says, what is going on here? I can't believe I have to waste my time do that. You know what? Winthrop's not the town for me. This is the message that this appointed official and his board is now representing us as a town and it's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Um, any other public comment?
Yes. Um, Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five, also the Chair of the Board of Health. Um, like to start a little bit earlier. So I was first appointed to the Board of Health, January of two thousand sixteen. The Board of Health at that time consisted of myself, Chairman Nick Laconi and Tracy Honan. In two thousand sixteen, we were drafting a Keeping of Animals Regulation that had two relevant points to this discussion, I think. One, chicken coops in the front yard, twenty yard distance between the property line and the coops. That was six years before Mr. Malios got a permit for chickens. And uh, we we never got around to an act again. Councilor uh, Honan left the board. Some other issues came up, then we had COVID. I told Council Honan and some other people in November twenty twenty-one, we were gonna look again at the Keeping of Animals Regulations. The current ordinance in place, I think was done in like two thousand twelve, talked about cattle and goats and sheeps and whatever. Not really relevant to the town. I think also Council Honan, that time we wanted to do something with bees as well as chickens. So I started to look at this in November of twenty twenty-one. Again, five months before Mr. Malios got a permit. So this idea that we were going to be eliminating chicken coops to the front yard was was way in advance of him having the permit. So he's correct. I've been friends of family, friends of the family for many years. Uh, his uncle Chris Yodas was one of my best friends. I've known him for over forty years. I was invited over for Greek Easter. Uh, it was mentioned they had chickens. I'm looking around. I didn't see the chickens. The chickens were in the front yard. Mr. Malios showed them to me. Uh, I said, that's that's really interesting. So I went home and looked at the existing ordinance. Now, the existing ordinance at that time said that there had to be a public hearing before the Board of Health. And there were a number of restrictions. Among them, it had to be fifty feet from a dwelling and twenty five, twenty feet from the property line, which probably nothing in Winthrop would would qualify. I told Mr. Malios that we were we were looking to do another regulations and again, it wouldn't be happening in front yet. Mr. Malios sent me a personal email saying basically there've been some complaints. He talked to Sharon Cicarella. He was intending to move it to the side yard. I said, fine. I said to him, let me come over and measure your side yard. And I have I have it on my uh, cell phone as well, so I have the messages if we need to produce them. I went over, looked at the side yard. I measured from the property line to his house on the side. It was twenty-two or twenty-three feet. Obviously, if we kept the twenty feet, which uh, issue in terms of from the property line that was in there in the draft that we did in two thousand sixteen, he wouldn't be able. So I said to him, I'll lower that to to ten feet, just like what we're having for the bees for ten feet. That would allow him to move it to the side yard. He said, fine, that's great. Few weeks passed. I said, have you moved the chickens yet? He said, he wanted to wait to see what the final regulations said. I said, well, you're you're not conforming to the particular ordinance resistance now. I said, here's what we'll do. So you don't have to move the chickens. We'll give you a temporary. But again, the regulation that we're gonna be putting in place once we go through the process will be mandating that you have to have them in the side yard, not in the front yard. All of a sudden, at some point after he got the variants, Mr. Malios decided that he wanted to keep them in the front yard. And he may got a lot of issues. He got some support from some people. He got signatures. This decision, we went through a number of hearings. We looked at what other communities did. My two fellow board members are both nurses. They looked at it from a health issue. They decided they did not think it made sense to have it in the front yard. The votes were three to nothing. It wasn't me. I think if anybody's trying to make this a personal issue, Mr. Malios against me. Because he I think he doesn't like the fact that we made a decision that he doesn't agree with. Now, we've gone through this process again. We basically, there were a couple of people who had issues in terms of didn't quite conform with the present regulation. One of the people had twelve chickens. And that in the current regulation calls for six. We looked at the existing ordinance which has twelve and we said, well, if you've got twelve under the existing ordinance, we said that we gave them a variance ticket. But we also said to Mr. Malios, if you wanted to have a new permit for the chickens, you have to move it aside. Right now, he has not gotten a renewal for a permit for chickens. Right now, he has chickens in his front yard still, no permit for the town. Now, I've contacted the the legal council, the Mass Association of Health Boards. We may have some discussion about whether or not the Chair can can issue a uh, a violation or not. We'll get that resolved and maybe Inspection Services will come down and do that. But the fact of the matter is, the issue is, Mr. Malis does not like the decision that the board has made. And he's trying to suggest that I'm making it a personal decision. In fact, the idea of not having chickens in the front yard is several years old. It's what most communities around here are doing. And he just doesn't like the decision.
Any other public comment?
Thank you. Jacked out Precinct One. Former Board of Health, Town of Winthrop. I believe it's the directors uh, has to issue tickets, not the council or whatever everybody says. There are three board members and they have a discussion about an issue if there's an issue. And then the director, and who was the director of the Board?
Inspection Services.
No, I think it's uh.
overseeing the violation.
This is Hurley, isn't it? She's the director?
Public Health. Oh, Public Health, yes.
She's the director.
About the violation.
I'm talking about Public Health. She's the director.
Yes.
When we had an issue back in the day, uh, we talked about it and then the director went out and issued the ticket. I just want to know if that's still the policy. It reads like it's still the policy.
For this incident, it will be out of the gate. Is there a health agent? They do all the restaurant inspections. And they do these kinds of enforcement, especially with this is tied to zoning. It would be out of the gate, it would be out issuing the ticket.
Okay, so if we have to listen to this again, will it be the director that issues the ticket or out of the gate?
Out of the gate.
Thank you.
Any other public comments?
We do.
Still hear those. John? Hey, John.
Thank you, Mr. President. My name is John Vitaleano in Precinct Five. I'd just like to add a couple of brief comments about two transportation issues that have come before the council in the past couple of days. Uh, one has to do with Councilor Ayello's comments about a week ago, um, about the uh, excessive speeding around the town, and I would absolutely like to uh, uh, you know, verify from my own personal standpoint. I think Councilor Ayello's comments were right on target. Uh, they jeopardize large areas of the town completely unnecessarily. There are remediation techniques that are available. And I strongly, strongly recommend and request that the Town Council make this the highest priority, a very, very high priority uh, to do something to correct the excessive speeding that exists throughout the town, every single precinct. Uh, also, a a smaller comment on the issue of um, public ways versus public uh, public ways and so forth. Then the in the um, ambivalence about the ownership of some of the public ways. Some of which I've been using for the last fifty years, though really having verification that they are public ways. Hopefully, hopefully that they are, because I'm very, very close to some adjacent private homes. And these were the comments that I think that Council, I I I I know brought uh, this Joe brought up about two meetings ago. It 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 really is a serious issue. I don't know how many private ways are out around the town. It's like I know three or four where I live up around uh, around O'Hare Avenue where that I use on a regular basis. And I hope when I'm walking through them, that I'm not violating any private owners', you know, property. There's also a potential legal threat here. And if a person, for example, is walking down one of these so-called private ways, solicitor fall breaks leg, um, ice or whatever. Um, what what if it's a private way or private ownership or so-called public way or whatever? What does, you know, what are the legal implications of that for town? Now, obviously, the expert of that would be Lieutenant Counsel Jim here, who who is a real expert in that. But it's just a potential issue that is out there unresolved. And my strong recommendation to the town is to set a process up immediately. One of at least identifying exactly where the all the public ways are in the town. And that should not be that hard, uh, you know, to do legally to identify them. Uh, where they are, where the locations are, and then to uh, you know, you know, define exactly what the implications of ownership by the town versus the the private, by by the adjacent private owners are as well. Uh, so it's just just my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is what I expected to do at the last council meeting and we're in the process. We have a list of public and private, of public ways. Uh, we, you know, the major thing, like you said, is we have to look at maintaining them properly and limiting any exposure the town may have. Supposedly, we're in the process of doing. It's not gonna happen overnight, but it's on our radar and I think it's very important to discuss.
I appreciate that, uh, if that's response. And again, my, you know, just like part of my request would be a commitment to public exactly where those uh, you know, public ways are in the town, uh, through some kind of a, you know, you know, you know, inclusion of the actual, you know, locations in, you know, in the with the press.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, online? Is there someone online for us?
Grace Kingsbury, could you please unmute?
Yes, hello. Um, I have a a few questions that I'd love to discuss. The first is the Crest Avenue Playground has been fairly inoperable for at least the past three years. One of the slides has been boarded up and the only usable one has had a significant cut down it. And I was wondering if that was on the radar of whoever manages the playgrounds? And if there's a plan to have it repaired?
I I would assume there is. I do not know if that's. We will ask that and get back to you tomorrow morning.
That would be great. Um, second, I'm sorry, I'm in Precinct Six.
Yeah.
Second, during just my walks around Winthrop, I have noticed on multiple occasions DPW vehicles idling. And I was wondering if if there is a policy in place or if there could be one uh, that would prevent town vehicles from idling for extended periods of time.
Uh, there's a state law around that. I believe it's ten minutes, but uh, yeah. Yeah, ten. That's what I thought. Yeah. So there there is a state law around that. So if they're doing it, well, it certainly remind them of the the policy. But um, it's not just DPW. It's police bruises too and things like that. So yeah, it's only supposed to be ten minutes.
Grace, I I live. I I live like seven houses down from that uh, park and I have ten and thirteen year old daughters. So um, I'll definitely be looking into that and seeing if I can do something about that.
That'd be great.
Because I I I I know the condition of the park and it's not good, so.
Yeah. Um, thank you. And the third thing that I wanted to bring up was the trees that were planted and they look spectacular. And I'm excited for the um, ceremony that will be coming up in June. Many of the leaves on the majority of the trees are cupping, which indicates that they are stressed largely due to inadequate watering. And so I know they are receiving water. I see the bags full. I I don't count which days, but I do see that they're getting watered. Um, I'd love to know if they could be watered at a higher rate than they currently are, especially since it's been so dry.
We can take care of that.
Yes, good comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you.
Steve, would you say, would you say the park at uh, Crest Ave is a hazard at this point?
Sean Sean Driscoll has has annual reports done inspections.
Yeah.
And I do think he ordered a pot for that slide and I don't want to speak for Sean.
Okay.
I'll I'll get the information.
Yeah, it's the two.
I just had some communication there. It's a uh, a piece on the tube slide. And it has been ordered and they're awaiting shipment of it.
It's been taking a while to get parts. We had some baby swings that took a little while to come in, uh, but they were in finally. So yeah, that's just more of the supply chain stuff, but has been ordered a while.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
I I just want to um, obviously now is precinct five regarding the speeding. Um, I'm not sure if you guys are aware, there was a massive accident Sunday morning at my parents' house on uh, the corner of Ninety Pleasant Street. Um, car went right, hit the side of the house, two thirty in the morning. Um, you know, I think I I I believe I came on a couple, a year ago, saying that the flashing crosswalk signs, raised sidewalks. Uh, you know, some of those ideas, I've seen the raised sidewalks on around college campuses to help slow down traffic. It helps. Uh, this is now the second time it has hit uh, my parents' house. There was one previous, not as ex, not as extreme. But this one is, this one's pretty, pretty eye opening. Uh, and then also around the bend, right where um, Sunnyside and Pleasant. Um, I know my grandfather's home has been, has had a a couple of cars go straight into the into the yard. So that street is, it's it's a high traffic street. I have had to come out and stop cars to have people just walk across, especially kids. We have a lot of children. And with the CBD, if we're, if we want to promote people coming down and walking down. Um, you know, we should have the adequate signage and uh, you know, safety, right? We don't want to have children crossing that street. God forbid, if this wasn't at two thirty in the morning, my parents could have been out front. Um, you know, having coffee or something and that car just comes slamming in. So it is real. And it's it's ironic that just in the neighborhood this past week, there was something about it. So just so that you are aware, there was an accident at two, two thirty in the morning on Sunday.
Yes, there have been a few accidents and we talked about it at the last council meeting, looking at the rumble strips or some sort of, you know, trying to limit potential accidents with plows and stuff, but in terms of the bumps. But um, it's definitely something that, you know, we can't just continue to talk and talk about. It needs to actually take place. Um, and and just to follow up on on Grace's thought, uh, discussion on Crest Ave that uh, the pot has been out of stock and it's hopefully gonna be in the first week of June. Based just on the overall condition of Crest Ave, we'll get back to you.
Other public comments?
Let me say one more. Um, can you please unmute and state your name and precinct?
Uh, can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, uh, Stephen Malios, uh, Precinct Five. So uh, a couple of things. One pertaining to the the speeding uh, on Pleasant Street. I know in a lot of towns, they have those raised um, where there's crosswalks and and so that it makes the makes the cars slow down. So that might be a thought uh, to do some of those on Pleasant Street. The other thing is pertaining to the chickens. And uh, my question is, is that, so uh, Mr. Schmidt, he grandfathered in the 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 woman that had twelve chickens and it's supposed to be six. So why can't he grandfather in Vasili's uh, coop being in front, number one? Number two is, is I want to know what the health issue is pertaining to it being in the front as compared to the side. I mean, if it's. I mean, if it's, if it's 10 feet from the side and 10 feet from the front, to me, it seems like there's no difference there. So I mean, those are the two things that I had to say. And, and I'll wait to hear what, what you, what you guys have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. We, we, we really can't comment on that from the council, but we will pass your comments on to the board of health and, and get an answer for you. And I appreciate your comments. Any other public comments? Okay, correspondence, Denise.
I had, Julia Wallace was giving us information on the Greenway. Shannon Vieira was talking about the parking fourteen stone on the corner of Walden and Lincoln Street. And that's all I got on that.
Councilwoman.
I would just want to relay the fact that I had one of my constituents address an issue crossing the street at that Pleasant Street intersection. And that there is really no safe way to cross between the laundromat and the, the, on the other side, basically a cross Pleasant, where it turns and it has that sharp corner. Really, it's designed for speed, for cars to make that hard, that, that smooth right. And there really, it's like a 40 to 50-foot crosswalk, where there is no pedestrian relief. There's no place, safe place. If you're going to cross, you're really kind of taking your life in your own hands. Plus, the light, sight lines are really bad. So I, I would actually encourage a, a, a quick review of that intersection for, for a temporary safety review. Because while I'm not expecting anything major to be done quickly, I would love to see a study done quickly with some temporary measures implemented as quickly as possible. This is dangerous and lives are at stake, so what are we doing if we're not saving lives?
You're talking about Pleasant and Main?
Yes.
So there was a $20,000 grant given to the town, maybe four or five years ago, to do a study. And I asked about the study not too long ago, a couple of months back. Because not only that intersection, just coming from the bridge end is, you know, it's, it's not the best situation in so many different ways, from crossing to lane shifting, from taking lefts, coming in from East Boston. I mean, you could go on and on and on with the issues there. I did ask to look at the study after it was finalized. And the study, the comment from the study was to put a small rotary there, which I, I can't even understand how that would be feasible. But that's what $20,000 got, you know, there's, there's, you have had tax money at work. But yes, tell me.
Well, we are, as we know, we're working on a tip project now that will be finished up in a few years. Well, you want to have the next tip project on the list. Director Cal has asked CHA to put together a scope to, for that next section, all the way down Main Street, all the way up to, you know, the Belle Isle Marsh and that area, which will incorporate the Pleasant and Main Street. So that's the next project to get on the tip, tip list and actually make the kind of improvements that we think are necessary. And hopefully it won't be rotary, but you know, something like that.
There are, there are so many issues.
To look at it, study it and get it, yeah. So we are, we're working on that next to get on the tip list. It'll be a few years, so we'll have to make some, probably some changes to the Pleasant and Main in the meantime. But, you know, yeah, exactly.
Four years, it's been too long to wait for some...
It could be longer than that.
We're going to have it, that on our hands, four times.
And Director Cal and I talked about that recently as well.
All right, any other correspondence?
This relates to that?
Relates to the correspondence?
Yeah, to this topic. So we made a request to get into the Mass dot CIP process that's going on right now. They've had their problems projects.
Right now, we've asked for a, an engineering quote to, to, to start the 25% design phase.
We'll get paid for that, yeah.
From Mass dot.
The 25% of the two, two master...
Yeah.
No, we made it to, to an engineer to give us a price to get us the 25%.
Yeah, we fund the first, yeah.
We fund that first, then they go to Mass dot.
We fund the whole thing, fund all the engineering.
Yeah, that's...
And that's in the request of this capital plan?
That, so we have waited on the pricing for it, but it will be. We talked about that earlier, we're going to put that on the gap.
All right.
We just don't have the final number.
All right, thank you. Committee report.
This is an open discussion.
How it is, thank you. But there will be another one at the end. Committee report, appointments, commissions and committees.
So the committee has been working on the employee evaluation process for a few months now. We have finished the process. All the counselors received a full packet with all the information. Just to lay out the process, we sent the employees, so the town manager and the town clerk, a self-evaluation form, asked them to rate themselves on different metrics, and also set forth some goals for the coming year. Each counselor was also provided with these feedback forms. We received seven out of nine forms back. So thank you to the counselors who did participate. We were able to get a pretty robust evaluation for both employees. So the forms looked at different metrics. For the town manager, it looked at supervision, leadership, executional policy, community relations, administrative duties, economic development, intergovernmental relations, town council relations, planning, financial management and budget. The reviews were very good for both employees. The town manager in his first year has gotten really good feedback from all of the counselors. And we're looking forward to continuing to work with Tony. And then for the town clerk, we looked at different metrics. Denise is the town clerk and council clerk, so they evaluated both aspects of the job. Individual work characteristics, professional skills and status, town council relations, election duties, reporting and records, fiscal management and staffing supervision. Again, the seven counselors all rated very high. We have some goals for each employee going forward to expand on their roles.
Well, you kind of went over the old business too, so I guess we're going to have to take that up and old business. But since we're here right now, it's what you gave us to report. Say, I do want to take the time to thank you and your committee for a really good job. And, you know, we had a, a specific evaluation form for 14 to 15 years. And we adjusted it a couple of years ago. And this is much more comprehensive, much more... It really focuses on all aspects of the job and the performance. And I think your work was done impeccably along with the committee. And, and it gives us a really good starting point too, if we want to adjust it in any way, shape or form. But I just want to personally thank you for the time you put into this and thank the committee for their recommendations and thank the counselors that took the time to fill out the recommendations. Finance Commission, we stick with that.
Thank you. The Finance Commission met last Thursday with both the police and fire chiefs. They presented their goals and objectives for the coming year and achievements of the past year. Then went over their budget. The police department's budget in total is $4,191,022. And the animal control budget is $58,557. With the fire budget is $3,488,997. And emergency management is $16,550. Both departments have projects and initiatives that are part of the capital plan currently. They have shown a commitment to training in both departments for their staff. They're working on train the trainer situations where one member of the department goes out, learns how to come back and train the other members. They are working on maintaining their fleets and making sure vehicles are up to date. And the main increases in both of the budgets are due to union contracts and coles.
All right, and thank you again. And again, we can't thank Finance Commission enough. About what they do in a short period of time is incredibly commendable. I know at the last Finance Commission meeting, we were hopefully going to have a comprehensive look at capital plan. And I think things just got ran a little longer, we didn't have the opportunity. But I believe we will have that opportunity this Thursday night, the 18th. I encouraged citizens as well as counselors to go to these finance commissions. You learn a lot and it's, you, you, you know, they take the, the deep dive and look into the nooks and crannies of the budget that as a council, at a committee, at a council meeting, we don't have really the opportunity to do. But thank you again for all the work on that. School Department report. The school department did meet recently. And what I do want to talk about is the schools run so many great events over the course of a year, whether it be extracurricular, athletic, academic. But one of the favorite things of mine over the past multiple years that I really enjoy to go to is they have a top 10% breakfast. And it's at Punch Park and it's on a Thursday morning usually. And it only takes an hour, an hour and a half. And, and they just do it in such a nice way. And they have all the kids from the top 10% of each class, so the ninth grade, 10th grade, 11th grade, 12th grade. And, you know, the kids are so nice, all the parents are there. There's got to be upwards of 175 people there. And they take their time to, you know, talk a little bit about each kid. And then when they get to the seniors, they do a more in-depth dive on each kid and their performance, their athletic performance, academic performance, extracurricular performance, where they're going to go to school, what they're going to study. And it's just so impressive. And, and I, I know as a parent, it's incredibly proud. But as a community member and, and elected official, I, I just get, I, first of all, I just get a kick out of it. I think it's a great event, but just so much pride in the community. And there were 65 kids that were represented here. And, you know, I wish I had the, the time to read every name. But I do want to acknowledge the top kids in each class. And, you know, this is in this point in time, it's just an incredible accomplishment. And in the ninth grade, it was Giada Gregarian. In the 10th grade, it was Caitlin Forley. In the 11th grade, it was John Tracy. And in the 12th grade, it's Benjamin Prue. And these kids, you know, they, they put in an inordinate amount of time. And these aren't just kids that go home and read books, they do other stuff. They're in drama, they're in athletics. And then at this event, they also give out book awards. They give out a Western New England University Book Award, they give out a St. Anselm's Book Award, Suffolk University Book Award, St. Michael's Book Award, the Columbia University Book Award, which is presented by Mr. Schmidt, who is alumni of Columbia. And we thank him for, for doing that. And they give a Harvard University Book Award, which usually goes to the top, didn't they, in the junior class, which it did this year. And, you know, just makes you proud. It's just, is, we talk about a lot of things and some of them aren't always great and everything else. But you go to an event like that and you just see how proud you are with the kids and the educators that we have in our school system. So I just wanted to take the report and talk about that. And I think Matt Prom and his staff are putting on a really nice event year after year. That's the school department report. We will go to town manager report.
Thank you, Ms. Council President. The, just a quick update on the fire at 91 Veterans Road. We had, we continue to work with the families. We're down to seven families now that are in temporary transient housing. A lot of the others have either, you know, made alternate plans or found other housing. I just want to again, comment on our clear team and the amount of work they're putting in to help these families out, navigate through the, you know, the state resources available to them, negotiate and talk to local landlords to try to help out with apartments that may or may not be available, things like that. I mean, they've really stepped on above and beyond. So I mean, you know, Meredith, her team, Jane, Bob, everybody over there, they've just done a great job. So I really remiss if I didn't say that. We have them at Olson Hotels, still on Route 1 and over in Sogus and PBD. We are continuing to work through, you know, only State Rep Jeff Turco with Senator Lydia Edwards. They're trying to find some other state funding to help. Senator Edwards did get us, tried to get us a budget earmark, but going through the budget earmarks, they don't come until probably the fall, after they get approved. So we're working on trying to find some funding for these families with the goal being to get them into apartments. So, you know, they don't need this housing. So that can, that effort, those efforts continue. And I want to thank everybody involved for that hard work. I did want to talk about, I mean, we're coming close to July 1. I know the council voted the new trash regulations. But I want to just remind everybody at home that, you know, as of July 1, you know, unless, whether you're a single-family home, you're allowed two barrels, one for recycling, one for trash. And then everything after that will be overflow bags, which will have several locations around town to purchase the bags. They're $3 a bag, they come in rolls of five, you know, $15. We'll be getting more information out. There'll be an op-ed piece by Wendy Cage-Milar this week in the transcript. Her and I are going to tape a show on WCAT next week. We've ordered some flyers that are going to go out, like the post guard styles, to remind everybody. So, but July 1 will be here before we know it. So we just want to start getting the word out, let everybody know about the new rules. Some good news on the ferry. Ferry made it out of Newburyport, it's now in Gloucester. We had the Coast Guard inspection, passed with flying colors. So very impressed with the boat. We're having the hull cleaned now and then we'll take it down and bring it down to Winthrop and do some training on the boat. But we'll have a, a date for the first ferry run shortly. So that's, it's coming down the bike, I would guess, in the next week or so. With the graduated union contracts, we did finish the superior union, i.e. the lieutenant's union. Those are done for the police. Negotiations, we're just waiting on some ratification on the police side, so that should be done shortly. And we did already talk about the roadwork schedules and things like that. What I did want to share, and Denise, I don't know if I can plug this in if we can share my screen here. But try to do some check, oh, it's not there. Let it take over the HDMI. But I, we have finally received the, we took three versions of the 3D renderings for Revere Street. Get that or not. There we go. So we had these done based on with, you know, the new antique lights being put in. Thanks to Steve and his crew, they were able to get the gentleman taking the pictures up in a bucket truck to get the shot. You know, and then they did the 3D rendering. So this will be what, you know, the Revere Street tip project, you know, down here at the end of Revere Street by Highland will look like. You know, you see the bike lanes on either side, the new crosswalks and islands, you know, the antique lights are in there. The first renderings came in without leaves on the trees, so I asked them to put leaves on the trees, I think it's better. So we, and then we go up here, this shows, you know, coming down to its Kennedy, showing you the little turnoff lane, what it's going to look like, you know, so you can turn down there. And then when the bike lane picks up, if you look way down, you can see it on the other side. And then the bike lanes on both sides with the new trees, you know, the crosswalk's still in place at the housing authority. And then the last rendering is down the street. You can see, again, see the bike lanes, Mitri, the Gulf, you know, the trees, the new streetlights coming in. You know, so this is just not what it's going to look like when it's all set and done. So we're going to have these posted on the website. We'll get them up, we'll get them around to everybody. So I just wanted to certainly get them on Frank, see what's interested in.
Yeah.
And they go from there.
He'll be a happy man.
Exactly. So that's just one of the shadows with the council.
Thank you.
Question. I was told that there was only going to be a bike lane on one side of the street.
As you can see here, there is, yeah. So we don't lose any parking, where we don't, you know, up the street, there's, on, about the upper end of Revere Street, there are on both sides. But on this end of the street, that's where they've talked about one end. Here, there's only one on part of it, as you can see. And then it picks up down there. And then if you go to the bottom picture here, up by Highland, they're on both sides there. And then, but you see it ends right at the crosswalk and then it comes off of Revere Street at the corner there.
There's not enough room for that. There's not enough room for two bike lanes. I, I, I know they, they spaced it out like that. There's no, there's no room for that. That's dangerous. My opinion.
All right.
Council flock.
So are you saying that if there's only one bike lane on part of it, that the bikes are going to cross over to get into that one bike lane?
Though, as far, well, it depends where you start. But yeah, I mean, you have to get, you know, sometimes you have to cross the street to get into a bike lane, yeah.
And are they going both directions in that one both bike lanes?
No, they have to follow the flow of traffic, yeah.
Okay. And then when the bike lane disappears on the one side, what do, what do they do?
Well, that's not the goal, is to try to have more bike lanes down the road. But this is a step in the right direction, but yeah.
Councilwoman.
Thank you, Tony, for the town manager report. And any updates on the old middle school?
We have the plans, we've found them out. So we're still waiting on your back. I did put in the request, Congresswoman Clark's office for some demo money, but we haven't heard back on that grant application request yet. So hopefully we'll, you know, have some positive news there. But if not, we're continuing to look for other applications to try to get some, as the council president talked about before, at least the auditorium and the old middle school piece. So we're still working on that.
Thank you for that, Tom. Councilwoman.
Listen, these graphics are really terrific. And I think they really help the public understand that there's a great product at the end after...
Now, we're very happy with it, see if you did a great job with it, so.
Yeah, it's great.
No problem. And well, like I said, we'll get them up on the website with the link so people can scroll through.
Yeah.
And a couple of things just I want to thank the town manager. And I had asked several weeks back or months back on town hall property on the flag. Wanted to get a bigger flag, a more, better presence for the flag up there. And thanks to Phil Rowan and his team and town manager, we have a beautiful new flag there with a beautiful new POW flag underneath. So I thank you for that. Also, you know, I think there was, I guess there was some communication. I didn't see it on the, on the tunnel. It seems like it was open this weekend. I just think the communication has to get, not with us, really, with...
Yeah. I mean, you got to be on social media. It was all over social media, but yeah, we, I talked to Larissa this morning about putting her link up on our website.
And I know they're transparent in some ways. I don't see it. And very disappointing, great that it's open. But I mean, there really was a lot of communication that I saw before that, that all of a sudden... that, that all of a sudden it's open, and it, you know.
It's a little bit.
I know it's something that needs to be done, but it's just, I don't think it's been handled in the best of ways, but that's my own public, private opinion. I do also, I did also see some resurfacing, which I'm very thankful for, down at the basketball courts, and a couple of pickleball courts, yeah, pickleball courts, a couple of pickleball courts coming to Ingleside Park, which I'm very happy to see also, I know it's, it's so incredibly popular right now, so thank you for that. And, and that's it, and the other thing, and I'll put it on a future agenda, by talking about the flagpole up here, well, I'll, well, talk about the flagpole up here, and I see the new concrete, the marble plaque put in for Mr. Eads. And I do wanna recommend, and I wanna ask the council and send it to the memorials committee, I would like to do something similar for Bobby Gillis at the new flagpoles at the E.B. Newton School, that will be going up. I think Bobby just did so much for this town, he was so supportive of the town throughout the election process and worked for the elections, but also just his, his presence and the talk to people and his knowledge of this town and the pictures he had of this town, and I would like to recognize him in some small way, and I think to do something similar to that, at that new three-flag pole, would be really, I think, a nice gesture, so I will be sending that to the memorials committee, but that is it. Anybody else for the town manager? Councilor Belcher.
Thank you. Any updates on the mitigation for the tunnel closure?
They haven't finalized yet, it's almost there, there'll definitely be some stuff coming for Winthrop residents, but they haven't finalized it yet. Chief Wiley, I was at way of training last week, Chief Wiley stepped in for me and represented out of Winthrop at that meeting, but we should have some more info this week, but they're almost done with the package.
Awesome, thank you.
The CDICR, Councilor Belcher?
Mm-hmm.
Yes?
The CDICR met last Wednesday, I believe it was, it was a brief meeting, but they talked about planning the Pride Potluck and Juneteenth, those are both continuing, they're hoping to have some information about both things out to the public soon, the Pride Potluck, I believe, will be June seventeenth. I think they're finalizing it.
Yes, yeah, four to seven, I believe.
Four to seven.
Yeah.
That'll be at Ingleside Park, there'll also be a small something for when the Pride flag is raised, right?
Correct, and also for Juneteenth, I think it was, maybe a table of coffee or something in a small, when we raise the Juneteenth flag, yeah.
That'll be on Monday, the night.
Correct.
All right, moving on to old business, Winthrop Beach access points, I got off the phone a couple hours before the meeting, Representative Turco, who has been incredibly helpful with this, and we hope to be finally having someone here, either at one of the next two meetings. You know, we're already getting, I know that there were people already down the beach getting something inside over the last few days, and, you know, this is a promise that was made to us, and we will hold them to that, so we will have somebody here within the next two meetings. The MBTA review, again, we had a great meeting with the T and Representative Turco on discussion of moving the line from Herman Street to Walden Street, we've obviously had some incidents on the Herman Street run, it's been a safety issue, I think, for many, many years, and the T has finally agreed to move that line from Herman Street to Walden Street. This would be done by July second, I believe, there will be three stops on Walden Street, those details are still being worked out, but primarily, there would be probably the Taco Walden in Maine, at the intersection of Walden and Lincoln, and at the crosswalk intersection across from the basketball courts. The safety will be improved immensely, the traffic flow will be much easier, I wanna thank the MBTA for their help in this, they were incredibly responsive, and just, they were very kind and very generous with their time. So there'll be more information coming on that, Councilor Ellis.
Yeah, I think it's a brave move in terms of service for everyone. One question in terms of whether we could push, is that for some people particularly going into town, they're gonna be a little farther from their homes, slightly longer walk, the ability to possibly get out of there, a couple of shelters for people waiting, particularly during inclement weather and winter months, definitely helpful to those neighborhoods right off of Walden.
Thank you. All right, town council employee evaluations, I think we covered that in committee reports. Private paths, public walkways, you see in your packet, there is a list, it's roughly thirty-five, now, this is a list that, you know, we weren't specifically clear on, on some of this, so in here, you will see, you know, public path, public walkways, and then beach access points, the beach access points, for example, a temple ab, Winthrop Beach, are not covered by the tunnel, Winthrop is taken and opened by the DCR, it's been there for a long time, but this gives us an idea, and for example, on Court Road, it just says multiple access points, so we're somewhere between thirty-five and fifty, probably, and I would like to send this to Public Works Department to take a deeper dive into it, you know, we wanna take a look at, you know, our liability in each location, come up with a plan for potentially for maintenance of these areas, and just to, you know, as one of the comments was made, just to have a public list of public walkways and beach access points. You know, I know we've asked for, for a few years now, especially up in the Court Road area, to clean up, maintain those access points better to the water, but, you know, this is not gonna be an overnight process, but I think this is something that's good, it's brought attention to the area, to the, to the issue, and, so this is a start, we're gonna move into Public Works, and, you know, we could have some feedback over the next couple of months.
One question, one suggestion, if any of us in our data teams understands that there's, why not on the list, should we send that to you?
Yeah, that would be great, or Denise has.
Or Denise, yeah, Denise has the question as well, yeah.
But Denise. And then the second, as we send it over to DPW, yes, for these things, but to understand the legal dimensions of those pathways, 'cause in some places where I see them, I think the pathway is actually probably larger than, than what it was originally intended, and some places, there's certainly been some encroachment over the years, so.
Yeah, that's gonna be, Jim and I have talked about this, attorney sub letter, I've talked about this, like, it's, it's gonna be a little bit deeper dive on that, 'cause sometimes maybe the easement doesn't exist, maybe it's just assumed that it was there and it was never filed, so we gotta look at, you know, each individual parcel, so it'll take a little time to, you know, as we start researching these walkways, and you know, what's been recorded, what hasn't, those kinda things.
It was interesting, the one in Cheryl Lane, that's listed here, new owner had site survey done, and came to understood that the previous owner had encroached and sort of moved back a little bit, so sometimes it comes from a private owner, sort of saying, saying, oh, I don't actually own all that.
Right, yeah.
Time to build a new fence or plant new things, and maybe pull myself, that information is obtainable.
I'll let it out.
Thanks.
Thank you. Let me give compliments. Just on that same note, I love the idea of the, shared on the website, but I think more useful would be an actual map, and so it wouldn't be that hard for graphic designer type to just do that. And then, I like, I think that, quite frankly, these public pathways and beach access points are a selling point of Winthrop, and they get more charming, I mean, I use it, and I, I love them, I mean, it's a great, it's, if I had to go all the way around the street as opposed to cutting through all these steps, it would take me forever from Lowell to Court Road, but now I just get down there in a hundred and fifty steps, and it's just fantastic, so, I love it, I just, I think that just making it more accessible, so people enjoy it more, and then we can even, you know, maybe have a little photos to promote them, et cetera, so I'd be happy to get involved in that, too.
Thank you.
Very quickly. Councilor Munson.
Very quickly, I mean, I, I was a political science and history major, so I take my daughters around town, and I actually take them up the caps, and I'm just like, you know, here's where the narrow gauge was, and people used to come down from here and come down from here, it's, it's really an interesting little twerk to our town to have these, and I, I think it's fantastic, I mean, we should preserve them, just from a histories perspective.
Thank you. Moving on, taking of town easements, Revere Street Tips Project, there is a motion from the town manager, that the town of Winthrop acquire by gifts, purchase, eminent domain or otherwise, on such terms and conditions as the town council shall deem to be best interest of the town permanently and temporary easements, on the posses of land shown on the plans entitled Winthrop Revere Streets at the Masses Easement Plan, dated March twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three. Prepared by CHA, one forty-one Longwater Drive, Norwell, Mass, zero-two-one-six-one, revised through this date, as may be amended, which plans are on file with the town clerk for public way purposes, including but not limited for the construction, alteration, maintenance, improvement, repair, and/or replacement of roads, sidewalks, landscaping, lighting, and traffic signals, and further to authorize the town manager to enter into, enter into all agreements and take all related actions necessary or appropriate to carry out this vote and other acts authorized where herein. So this is coming from the, from the town manager, this has been discussed, if we wanna give any further update on this, just to understand that this is for the easements, the, the financial piece of this is already been done, the money is set aside, it's not coming from any revenue source from operating budget.
Correct.
So what we are voting on is the ability for the town manager to enter into these easements, and as we heard before, if there is any debate from a certain property owner, the easements are gonna, this is going to take place, and then there would be further potential litigation down the road.
And just if the council does vote this in the affirmative, then what it is, will be pretty notice taking letters, and it'll outline the process, what the vote was, and then next steps for them to come in, we'll probably pick a couple of days and have times of people to come in and pick up their checks, and a lot of W9s and all that kinda stuff that goes along with it, but we'll have the process laid out, and that'll go out to the owners next, so.
So if we could at least have on the table, is there a motion, I can make the motion. Motion. Motion by Councilor Belcher, second. Well, second by Councilor Munson. Any further discussion on this motion? Councilor Belcher.
I just had a clarifying question, for the ones that are temporary, what's the movement of the process?
Let's see.
It's one amount of money, it's both a temporary and a permanent, the temporary is only for four years, and then it expires, so once the ten, once the four years is up, the temporary easements no longer exist.
So we pay them?
Correct.
And then in four years, they get the property back, do we buy it back from them?
Nope, they just, they get the money now upfront, and then the easement just goes away, and then any of the permanent easements stay in place, and they stay recorded with the deed.
Thank you.
Councilor Munson. And just as a, kind of a thirty thousand level comment, it just seems as though you've done a very good job of being non-biased, very professional, these people don't even, some of these people didn't even know that they had access to this part of the land, I think you guys are doing it very fairly and very professionally, and I think that to do, to give you the power to move forward allows the construction to stay on schedule, and for me, people to understand the process, it doesn't mean that people can't argue or debate for more money or down the road, it just keeps the, the process moving, so that we can be on track and keep this project to as minimal impact the town as possible. Well, I'm in full favor of it, and I applaud the town's effort, just need to stay on top of the communication.
Yes.
Seeing no other discussion, I'll ask for a roll call, please.
Councilor Honan?
Yes.
Councilor Visello?
Yes.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco?
Yes.
Councilor Flakot?
Yes.
Councilor Aiello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
President Luteri?
Yes.
We've got a new business, and there are multiple, multiple motions that are going to be referred to finance, most of them refer to year-end closeouts, some of them refer to items that are still in the department. The motions include appropriate forty-nine thousand eight hundred dollars retained earnings, water waste fund, also appropriate fifty-eight hundred and twenty-four dollars and eight cents for unpaid bills from a prior year, town council appropriate forty-three thousand eight hundred dollars from free cash for year-end close, town council transfer a hundred and sixty-four dollars and five cents to close out scholarship, scholarship closeout, town council appropriate five hundred thousand dollars water store retained earnings for just stabilization fund, town council appropriate eight hundred and sixty-two thousand six hundred and nineteen dollars capital stabilization, police vehicles, capital projects, town council certified free cash, town council vote to modify general fund budget closeouts, and those are all going to be referred out to finance.
One question?
Yes, Councilor.
Was that for the police vehicles, was that sixty-two, or did you say eight sixty-two?
It is sixty-two.
It is sixty-two. I'm sorry if I missed.
Thank you.
Guess that's the, it's a double dollar.
Yeah, exactly.
What was the important one?
Could look, either look like any, yeah.
Did you take that? No. All right, also, I had a discussion on town council rules, I was looking at various boards and committees, and when they met, and moved to rules and ordinance, Vice President's not here tonight, so we'll get that, and that is to look at the possibility of adjusting the town council meetings from seven to six, to be more in line with Finance Commission's full committee and such, but we, that will be referred out to rules and ordinance, and so probably two meetings from now will be referred out, well, it's being referred out now, but Vice President might not get it right away. National Grid, this. This is the one we saw earlier, so this is, new business does not have to be voted on tonight if we choose not to. No, I'm sure the homeowner would like it, I would have liked to hear from any of your buddies, but I know they were notified, I did ask to see if there was any, and it's not, like, we're not putting up double poles, we're not, we're not doing anything.
I don't care.
The National Grid, this is more of a homeowner issue, and, so would you, it's gotta be a motion, hello? Let me just.
I just wanna make sure that passing this wouldn't, like, supersede the permitting process in any way, right?
No, there's still the required.
I just don't wanna give them like a new pathway.
It just seems that it's coming to us.
They come to us.
They always come.
Yes. Any homeowner put their wires from the street down, ground as.
You can make the request, if there's not a telephone pole nearby, it's not gonna happen.
Right. So this is just requesting authorization, I'll read it, if you have any questions. The following are the streets and highways referred to, plan number three zero seven five nine two three one Cottage Ave, National Grid is to install beginning at pole number three eighty at fifty-nine Cottage Ave, approximately six feet in the north direction through the sidewalk to private property line, excavate six feet from the edge of the utility pole across the sidewalk to the property line at fifty-nine Cottage Ave, excavation onto the private property approximately thirty, parallel to the existing structure, to a new electrical meter location. So that's what they're requiring, what they're asking us, if we could just, before, if we have any questions, just ask the DPW director, just to give us an English language version summation of this.
Sure, so they're gonna set conduit from the building, their new meter, wherever they decide to put their meter, along their private property, and then they're gonna cross our sidewalk, put a sweep up the pole, there happens to be a pole adjacent to the property. Once that work is done, National Grid will come and they'll connect onto the sweep and bring it up to the, to the wires at the top of the pole, create the connection.
Councilor Munson. I had two quick questions, one, is, is the homeowner covering all the cost?
That's what, that's what National Grid.
Okay, and then secondarily, is there no safety hazard having electricity literally at arm's reach up the pole?
It's in a conduit.
It's, I don't understand, there's a tree, like, a tree is the, is the pole?
And I don't understand, there's a tree, like a tree is the, is the pole. And so there's something that extends off the wood that is accessible to touch.
Solid conduit. It'll be a plastic conduit going all, all the way up.
So there's no safety hazard? There's no, like, possibility kind of creaks through or?
No, it's fully enclosed.
So you're comfortable with it?
Yeah, we, I mean, if you pay more attention to a walking sidewalk, you'll see it.
More common.
In a lot more areas than you think of that.
My old hometown in Maine actually took all their power lines down in the center of town and it totally improved the appearance of the town center. Is that something that we've ever considered?
We looked at it. We looked at it in the CBD, at the beginning of the CBD at the CVS intersection. And it was going to cost, the cost wasn't really the issue. The issue was the timing. National Grid couldn't commit to doing it in set amount of time.
Timing was, it was also the needed large, large balls because there's two transformers right at the intersection of Woodside and Pauline, which would have had to be put in the ground as well. So it was, didn't have the room for the, all the utilities that were going in because we were upsizing the pipes, you know.
The other concern, too, is it's expensive because it's not only the wiring that you're bearing, but you also, all the transformers that are on the poles now have to have pads on the ground. And you gotta find spots for the transformers. It's quite a process.
And just to know, we're staying on Cottage Ave right now. Council Ayello had a question first.
And just for clarification, you were referring to panels when you were talking to National Grid person. I just wanted to get into sort of English. That's the concrete section.
Sidewalk panel, yeah, they would recommend them just cutting the, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
And Council Flacott.
Just for Councilor Munson's information, all of Seal Harbor is underground.
My, my, my.
Our wire, our electricity doesn't go out.
You'd need to with the wind out there.
Yeah, that's probably why they did it. But when everybody else's electricity goes out, ours doesn't.
Okay. And on this motion here, so this would give the authority for National Grid to do the work. Again, they would have to conform to all the rules and regulations from the town of Winter in terms of permittinging and installing such for the property owner as well as responsible for any needed details. Any further questions, others?
Would you take a motion to consider it tonight?
I would take a motion to consider it for the.
I second that. Okay, I don't have to second that.
I'm sorry, you're real.
So I make a motion to consider it tonight.
I second. All right, so we don't have, this is just a vote on the motion. We're not voting to, we have the right to vote in it tonight. If somebody wanted to exercise their right not to vote, we could do that. So Council Ayello is making a motion to pass this to approve their recommendation. And Council Munson has seconded it. Any further discussion on it? I'll take a roll call vote just to have it, please.
Council Honan?
I'm sorry, I'm not exactly sure what we're voting.
We're voting to approve the request from the homeowner and National Grid.
Oh, got it. Yes.
Council Piscillo? Council Munson?
Yes.
Council Belcher?
Yes.
Council DiMarco?
Yes.
Council Flacott?
Yes.
Council Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
Yes.
Council Munson, Councilor Belcher.
Thank you. I wanted to make a motion to accept the committee on committee's evaluation of the town employees.
All right, there's a motion that's made from the committee. It does not need a second. The committee requires a recommendation. Again, we thank the committee for all their work. Any other discussion on the motion? Seeing done, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Second round of public comments. Yes.
So Bell Smith, Precinct Five, also chair of the Board of Health. So I wanted to thank you, President Luteri, for mentioning the top ten percent awards. I've gone many years, you know, the Columbia Book Board. Just as a side note, I'm getting cataract surgery this summer. So I'll be able to read the fine print better next year. Because math, Columbia had really small print, which was hard to read. But on, but on the other issue, on the Board of Health issue, just to respond to Stephen Malios's two questions, and Stephen being the father of the silly. One regarding the, neither, neither case was grandfathered. So what happened was somebody had twelve chickens, which was the, which was according to the existing ordinance at the time. We looked at what Semble did, which is basically that as, as particular chickens expire, they eventually get down to six, so they would comply. The second issue was, we, we did not give a variance to Mr. Malos because folks felt that front yards is more traffic, et cetera. In fact, most communities limit chicken coops to backyards. We, we didn't want to go that far because, given Mr. Malos's situation, his backyard's all paved over. So that wouldn't have been an option, yeah.
Thank you. Any other public comment, Mr. Bell?
Thank you. Jack Dow Precinct, one. On the YouTube version of this meeting, it's hard to understand the sound. So maybe we can fix that.
I did talk to Michael Ball from WC.
Thank you.
Yesterday about that.
And concerning traffic. My next door neighbor and good friend, Dr. Steve, got hit by a car down here at the bottom of the hill on Pauline and Walden. And it's a very wide street right at that intersection. So on the other side of the street, where you go into the center, they bumped out the sidewalks. And so that's a, I guess, a traffic calming situation. So I'm wondering when we're gonna do that at this corner. There's been a death there. It's a very fast area. It's wide open. People think when they see a wide open space, they can go faster. So maybe if we do that. And then on the other side of the street where the restaurant is, it's also wide. There's a lot of kids down.
Oh, in Lincoln and Paulie?
Lincoln and Walden. If we could do that down, that's a very wide street, too. So people go fast there. People go fast everywhere in this town, except for me. People are very slow. The other thing is at the corner of Main, when you're coming into Tom Main and Pleasant, I go to that restaurant, I get dizzy watching Costco by. It's just, you know, it's unnerving basically, so that's why I don't go down there. It's a fast, fast intersection. I'm wondering if there's a no turn on red light on the right. So if they go by, they go around that corner on two wheels, very fast. I wouldn't cross that street for anything. I'd, I'd walk a block, a block down the other way to get anywhere in that corner. I would go down Pleasant Street. So is, is there a no turn on red sign there?
There is not a no turn on red there.
Wouldn't that eliminate a lot of that speed if you had that?
Well, I think you're supposed to come to, there is a green arrow at one point, but there is a point where there is a solid red light. And I think, to me, the point is to, again, to stop on the red light because there is no way on a red light, you're supposed to just continue the turn. You're supposed to come to.
Are we to put a sign there for that?
No, we don't, we do.
Are we going to put a sign there? You have to stop there instead of, you know, going by there on two wheels at thirty-five miles an hour.
We could look into that.
Look into.
Thank you. The other thing is, I always go a couple of miles lower than the speed limit. And I'm sure it irritates a lot of people behind me. My friends tell me that. And that's the fun part of driving around the town with, thank you very much.
I can't imagine you irritating anybody. Any, any comments on, any public comment on Zoom? Okay. On public relations, there are a couple of events coming up. Well, one is nomination papers are out. The elections, town, local elections will be November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Papers are now available at the town clerk's office. Deadline for return is September nineteenth. On May twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, households, hazardous household collection at DPW. This will be Saturday, the twentieth, from nine AM to noon. DPW Lot One Hundred Kennedy Drive, there's information on the website, but items such as motor oil, oil filters, batteries, alkaline batteries, rechargeable batteries, lithium batteries, cell phones, propane tanks is a charge, rimless tires, there's a charge, and oil-based paints, and there's a small charge. But more information is on the town website. Also, on May twenty-eighth is the Memorial Day program, which will begin at ten o'clock at the Winter Cemetery. And Richard Honan does, as he does with pretty much everything he does, an incredible job in doing the vast organization of that. And that will be held at, again, be held by the Legion Post, one forty-six. Memorial Day program will begin Sunday, May twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, nine AM. There's a marine service at the Winter Yacht Club. Ten AM, a memorial service at St. John's Episcopal Church. And then an assemble, we will assemble at Winter Cemetery at nine forty-five. And I would encourage everybody to attend. It's also, it's always well attended and it's a fantastic event.
Monday, twenty-nine.
It's Monday, why does it say Sunday this week?
I don't know about Sunday, that's.
Sunday the twenty-eighth, just for clarification, my bad. Sunday, the twenty-eighth, nine AM, marine service, Winter Yacht Club. Sunday, the twenty-eighth, ten AM memorial service, St. John's Episcopal Church. Monday, May twenty-ninth, nine forty-five AM, assemble at Winter Cemetery. Any public relations, Council Flacott?
Yes, please. I have two at the library. One is on Wednesday, May twenty-fourth, at six PM. There'll be an author there, Jane Healy, to talk about her book, Good Night from Paris. And on the thirty-first, Wednesday, at six PM, there's going to be a presentation that the Delphina Theater Company will be there to do an interactive presentation where the audience will be asked to participate in the conclusion. It's on Lizzie Borden.
Oh.
Lizzie Borden took an ass.
Forty.
Or did she? You decide. And that's at the Lyceum Room, not right at the library. The author will be at the library.
Council Ayello?
Councilor DiMarco?
First off, I want to congratulate Denise and Tony on a great year.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you both. We also lost two very, very well-known people. First off, Mr. Pelagreedy passed away. He ran the Amfield Snack Bar for years. I don't know if that would go to the school committee or to the memorials committee, but, you know, maybe naming the snack bar after Mr. Pelagreedy.
He has the Pelly Pole.
Yeah.
And it was, it was actually ironically, Peter was a tremendous guy and a great asset to this town. And ironically, if you look at the transcript, this past week's transcript and going back through the years, it was, it just happened to be in there that the dedication of that pole was ten, ten years ago, I think.
Yes.
Yes, he was a tremendous asset to the town. And secondly, Mr. Nimblett.
Anybody who had Mr. Nimblett as a teacher, that hurts. I mean, great guy, one of the best guys you'll ever meet. His son coached my daughter's championship basketball team this year. You know, he was a tremendous asset to the town and nobody missed. And then finally, somebody on the town council is turning fifty this year. Just wanted to bring that up. I don't know who it is. So that's all I can.
Council Belcher?
Just wanted to mention that the Winter Bengagers event has been postponed. I mean, it was supposed to be tomorrow, I believe, and it's been postponed.
Council Munson?
Yes, please, thank you. Two things. We ended up having a community lunch this past Saturday in thanking the Winter first responders. Jawrowski was there, Gigi Maggio is there from MRC. Fire couldn't make it, they had a call, so they were busy. But it was great to be able to show our support and our thanks to them for helping out during the fire at ninety-one Betterman's Road. And also as a form of our showing our support, we actually made a beautiful lunch and delivered it to all the displaced families up in Peabody and, and the two places in Saugus. Which, thank you, Tony, for giving me the names because they literally checked every single name before they would make the call to say, your lunch is here. So it was wonderful and I just, I love this town in that it has such a big heart. And it was a pretty big event and these families have to feel like they, we do care, you know? So another thing I wanted to say, and kind of in, on the same note as, as Rob, I lost a friend and a neighbor who was only fifty-three with a sudden heart attack. And Rick Clancy deserves a shout out. He was a gentleman. He was funny. He was kind. He was, he was just one of those guys that everyone loved. And it's just hard to process something like that, just, you know? So I guess the moral of the story is live life to the fullest and you never know. There's no guarantees.
Thank you, and Rick was a tremendous guy. Council Honan?
Nothing, thank you.
All right, I put a motion to adjourn. Motion by Council Belcher, second by Council DiMarco. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing done, all those in favor say aye.